Okay, I'm going to call to order this Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, October 14th. Our first item of business is electronic participation. Correct? Electronic participation. Supervisor Sarah Bone. Section 2.2-3708.3 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended permits members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations. Board member Sarah Bone has requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for October 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM to be physically held at the Government Center in Christiansburg. Supervisor Bone is unable to attend due to a personal matter which prevents her physical attendance. Members physically present shall vote to agree to allow participation by other board members requesting to participate remotely. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
This will be the last one, right? Because there's only two.
Yes, our board policy allows members to participate in two meetings remotely annually for personal reasons, so this is the second one. Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Jikowski.
No.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair DeMots.
Aye.
All right, I have four ayes, one no.
Thank you. Our next item is a motion to enter closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, community services board. Two, Parks and Recreation Commission. Three, Social Services Board. Four, county administrator. Five, county attorney. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fritchowski.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Chair DeMots.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We are in closed meeting.
Is there a motion to go out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fritschowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Chair Demonts?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, next we need to certify our closed meeting. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas, Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fritschowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Boone?
Aye.
Chair Demonts?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and I'm gonna take just a moment of privilege before, excuse me, the invocation and pledge, and just mention to everybody here and to anybody who might be watching, the county email server has been experiencing some difficulty. So if you've tried to reach out to any member of Montgomery County staff, or any member of this board, and have not gotten a response, please do understand that our IT staff is literally burning the midnight oil to get this problem resolved. I don't have an estimated date that it will be resolved, but they are literally working until it's resolved without taking a break. So we do very much appreciate their work, and please be patient with us. And all of us have, all of our Board members do have phone numbers posted on the county website, and all of our departments also are reachable by phone. There is a notification on the county's website stating as such, and then I'm assuming that notification will be updated when the servers have been restored. So thank you very much for allowing me the moment to say that. And then I'm gonna turn it over to our county administrator, Ms. Angie Hill, for an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please stand as you're able for a moment of silence, and then join me as I lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. We'll move now to our presentations this evening, and we have a huge crowd in the room because we have our fire and rescue volunteer awards. And I can't find him, but I know we have Chief, there you are, right there on the front row. We have Michael Geary here to present the awards. Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, good evening, Board members. Thank you all very much for having us again this year. As you all know, this is an annual kind of tradition now that we do to recognize the service of the volunteers of our fire and rescue organizations here in Montgomery County. Tonight, we're recognizing 31 different individuals, some who are present here in the audience tonight, and some who unfortunately couldn't make it. Of those 31 volunteers, they represent 972 years of service to this county across seven different fire and EMS agencies here in Montgomery County. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the families that are here tonight as well. The sacrifice that the families make for them to be able to go out on nights, on weekends, on holidays, to be able to serve our citizens is no small sacrifice either. So with that, we'll go ahead and start recognizing our volunteers, starting with the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department. I'm joined tonight by Chief Sheeler, the Chair of the Fire and Rescue Commission, and Chief Hanks, the Vice Chair. So we'll go ahead and get started. Our first recipient tonight with 25 years of service is Perry Moorhead. Our next recipient tonight with the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department is Christopher Lucas with 35 years of service. Our next recipient with the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department is Wayne Hunter with 45 years of service. With the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, we'd like to recognize Katie Davis with 20 years of service. Next, we'll recognize the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department, starting with Captain Mike Dickerson with 55 years of service. Next, with the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department is Scott Canada with 25 years of service. Next, with the Christiansburg Volunteer Fire Department is Forrest Redd with 20 years of service. With the Long Shot McCoy Fire and Rescue Squad, we'd like to recognize Chief Steve Sheeler with 31 years of service. Next, with Long Shot McCoy, we'd like to recognize Rebecca Sheeler with 26 years of service. Next, with Long Shot McCoy, we'd like to recognize Ronnie Turpin with 37 years of service. Next, with Long Shot McCoy, we'd like to recognize Greg McCoy with 43 years of service. Next, with the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, we'd like to recognize Bill Harris with 35 years of service. Next, with the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, we'd like to recognize Jerry Saw with 40 years of service. Next, with the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, we'd like to recognize David Duncan with 40 years of service. Those are all the recipients that we have in attendance tonight, but we'd also like to recognize Christopher Dowdy of the Blacksburg Volunteer Fire Department with 30 years of service, Jeffrey Robinson with 30 years of service, Drew Smith, 30 years of service, Randall Alls, 35 years of service, Joe Strickler, 45 years of service. With the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, Steve LaPera with 20 years of service, Chantel McGill with 20 years of service. With the Elliston Volunteer Fire Department, Craig Helvey with 20 years of service, Benny Ryder with 20 years of service, and Baron Gibson with 20 years of service. From Long Shot McCoy Fire and Rescue, Gary Akers with 30 years of service. From the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department, Mikey King with 20 years of service, Ron Baldwin with 35 years of service, Joe Lucas with 30 years of service, Scott Long, 25 years of service, Maven Ogle, 40 years of service. And lastly, with the Reiner Volunteer Rescue Squad, Jessica Roop with 20 years of service.
Thank you so much for being here and for allowing us to be a part of this. Volunteers truly bring out the best in our community, and we are all just so honored and privileged to spend time this evening in your company, and thank you very much for everything that you do for our community. And I feel certain that some of my colleagues up here also might want to share a few words. So I'm just gonna come down the line and give everybody the opportunity to say a couple of things.
I mean, all I can say is wow. I mean, right? We just heard how many years, I lost track of how many years we just celebrated, but it's literally hundreds, and so, thank you. I echo everything that Chair Demots said. Guys, sorry I was not at Long Shop this Saturday, I missed ya. But congratulations, and thank you very much for your service.
I just echo, thank you so much, and you see folks on the worst day of their lives sometimes, you're the one that's there, and you're the one that cares. And so, thank you for what you do every single day, day in and day out.
So I had the privilege of traveling around all the different departments and talking to a lot of people, and I was very impressed, and it made me wanna work even harder, because this is, I feel this is the backbone of our community, and seeing this many years being recognized and the commitment that they have, I think it says a lot about where we live. And I think that's a good celebration, so thank you very much for what you do.
Just wanna say thank you to every one of you, and a special thanks to your family for allowing you to serve your community. We really do appreciate it.
Supervisor Bone, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I agree with my colleagues. Thank you very much for all of your service. It doesn't take long for living here in Montgomery County to recognize the impact that you all have on our county. Several years ago, my neighbor, my neighbor's house burnt down, and that was a perfect example of how our neighbors, you all, volunteer your hours unselfishly, your family supports you, and we couldn't be more happy and more, more pleased with your service and thankful. Thank you.
Yeah, there's very little I could add to that, but coming from a first responder background on the police side, I am amazed at how many of you I worked with. I retired 17 years ago. So, you definitely got me beat, and we appreciate everything you do, all the years that I spent out there with you all. I have absolutely no complaints. Everybody gives it 100%, and to be a volunteer just makes it that much more special. So many of you have it in your blood, and I think that is just an awesome thing. I mean, I've seen the sons and daughters of the parents picking up the work and joining right in, so keep it up, do it as long as you can, and I hope you're enjoying it. Thank you.
And let's give everybody one more round of applause. Thank you all very much, and we'll pause for just a moment. I know you're absolutely welcome to stay, we'd love it if you want to, but if you want to go home for the evening, we'll take just a moment to kind of let everybody clear out before we resume the meeting. Thank you all so much. Okay, and we'll go ahead and resume. I hate to have to throw it to you to follow that, this is a hard act to follow, Mr. Clark, but we have David Clark with the Virginia Department of Transportation here to provide an update on road issues. Welcome, sir, thank you for being here.
Thanks very much, that was a very impressive number of years of volunteer service, it's amazing. I've got just a kind of list here of the maintenance items we've been working on, it's been a pretty good month weather-wise to get a lot of work done. We've done a lot of pothole patching, I'm not gonna go through all the routes, but we did, we did some major kind of work that had been asked for by citizens and the Board. One thing, we replaced the pipe on Mud Pike that we've had a citizen come and ask a couple times about, not Mud Pike, we did a ditch on Mud Pike, we replaced the pipe on Mount Zion Road. Machining gravel roads, even some dust control, because it has been dry for a little while, ditching. We've done some work on, a lot of work on gravel roads, did some work on Poff School Road. I spoke to Mr. King about some of the issues on Poff School Road, and we did get a petition emailed to us, I think it might be presented during public comment tonight on Poff School Road. We're working through some of those issues, some are things we can do, some we can't, some sign, kind of thing. Speed limits are a tougher thing to do on an unpaid road, but we will address the items in the petition with the person who sent that in. We worked on, we took a week to go over our equipment for our dry run, for snow removal operations, and made sure all the trucks were, took the tailgates off, put spreaders on, made sure everything was running, had our mechanics go over each piece of equipment, grade them, find out what else needed to be worked on, and so we're getting ready to go with that. Plus, we've been doing a lot of hiring of private equipment, local people who are willing to sign up with us, go through all the hoops of signing up with a state agency to do work for a state agency, and help us out when snow comes. We get a lot of private contractors, local people, just, you know, some of them just one or two trucks, that's all they, you know, you don't have a huge fleet, but they're willing to come out and, kind of like these volunteers here, but I think we pay our guys. And, but we've been doing a lot of that, signing those guys up too. Not much on the way, we're working still on some of the design work for the next unpaid road. We did some, some, some patching in Ellet Valley, in Deer Croft and Woodland Hills section, some slope repair on Coal Hollow Road, like I said, a couple other pipe replacements on High Rock Road, as well as Catawba Road, and I mentioned the one on Mount Zion, which is a fairly large pipe. And that's it, that's all I got for right now.
Okay, so you are correct that we do have people signed up for public comment to talk about Poff School Road. We also have some people signed up to talk about the pedestrian bridge over 460. Did you wanna say anything about that?
I've got nothing to add, I've spoken, like I said, I have the petition, so we'll address that, I've spoken to some of the representatives that are here to talk about that, I really have nothing else to add on that. I think this may be their, you know, they've written to me, spoken to me, I've written to our Commissioner, I think maybe this is their time just to talk to the Board about some stuff.
Okay, perfect. Everybody that signed up for public comment tonight is here to talk about road issues, so we'll have that coming soon in the meeting, and then I will turn over questions to my colleagues. Supervisor Bone, do you have any questions?
No, I do not, thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Kits?
Um, no, nothing at this time, thank you.
Supervisor King?
No questions, him and I spoke before the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
No.
Supervisor Grafsky?
Just thank you for replacing that coal, or that pipe at the Mount Zion.
It was very, it was very much needed.
Okay, good. Well, I mean, not good, but you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Glad it was done.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
All right, Vice Chair Fidzikowski?
You're getting away too easy tonight, David, so I'm gonna have to find something. I was gonna mention to you that there was a low-hanging tree getting ready to fall on Route 460, but I guess it fell last night, and you all had to clean it up, so we'll scratch that one off the list.
Sometimes they're called overtime trees.
The, is there any word on the speed study for Allegheny Springs, that, that one section?
No, I haven't heard about that, and then there was those curves.
I know the district, they probably get, I mean, how many counties are in your district?
Twelve counties in one group that does all the speed studies.
I'm sure they get all the requests, but...
I will prod them on that, though.
I'm sure that, or at least if we knew where we were in the queue.
Sure, yeah.
You know, just to kind of get an idea. But other than that, I'm good.
All right.
Okay, and I don't have any questions, did that bring up anything for anybody else? Okay? Thank you so much for being here this evening, we appreciate, as always, the information that you share.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a series of public hearings. The first public hearing that we have this evening, I should have also opened the meeting by saying that we are working with a new software platform, so we're learning it in real time as we're going through this meeting. So our first public hearing this evening is an ordinance related to the tax exemption and deferrals for elderly and disabled staff. Angie, did we have anything to say before we open the public hearing on that?
I don't think we had anything to say, other than this just increases the limits for qualification for the program.
Perfect. All right, so then we will open the public hearing. I did have one citizen sign up to speak on this topic, and then after this citizen speaks, if anybody else would like to address the ordinance for tax relief for elderly and disabled, we'll give you time to do so. Welcome, if you'll please state your name and where you reside.
Thank you, my name is Anna Vajean, and I live in District A. I was disappointed to find that your new tax relief plan involves only a cost of living increase, rather than a more impactful change. Back in the spring, many of you expressed concerns about the ability of those on a fixed income to afford a three cent or even a one cent tax increase. This is your chance to address the important issue of affordability for those on a fixed income. Please consider raising the net worth limit to at least the median level of net worth for Americans 75 and older, which is currently about $335,000. Montgomery County's current net worth limit of only $210,000, or what you would approve today, if you go forward, is way below what is recommended for retirees to have saved, a figure that would more reasonably be over $500,000. If you are hesitant to extend tax relief because of concerns about the impact on tax collection, I do encourage you to ask for a study to find out what the impact would actually be. I also encourage you to investigate tax freezes as an alternative to tax exemptions. I understand that many counties in Virginia do tax freezes. Localities in Virginia, many localities in Virginia have higher net worth limits for tax exemptions than Montgomery County, and many have tax freeze programs that apply to even higher net worth limits. For example, the net worth limit in Albemarle County, another county with a university, is currently $312,000, and the limit in the city of Richmond is $450,000. Norfolk City's net worth limit is equivalent to their average residential assessment, which is currently $310,400. Note that according to Zillow, Norfolk City's average home value is only $302,000 compared with Montgomery County's average home value of $339,000. Our, our average home value is more than Norfolk City's, so we should be able to offer tax relief that is at least as generous as Norfolk City's. I did find notice of the tax relief program on the back of my most recent tax bill, however, it does not state in the notice that the value of the home is excluded from the net worth calculation. This admission could cause many residents who qualify for the program to believe that they do not. I suggest advising this notice to make it much more prominent, maybe on the front of the bill in color, also easy to read and easy to understand. I also suggest including in the tax bill envelope the form that residents would need to submit to take advantage of tax relief. I also encourage you to include a notice and the relevant tax form, the relevant form for tax relief for working farms and properties under a conservation easement. I imagine that there are many residents who qualify for tax relief but do not know to apply. Once again, please raise the net worth limit to at least $335,000, make sure all residents are properly informed about the tax relief program, and make it easy for people to apply by including the relevant form in the envelope with the tax bill. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We, I'm sorry to interrupt, we do not, we keep the meeting going, we don't clap or anything after a public speaker, so we do not have anybody else signed up for this specific public hearing, but if there's anybody else that would like to speak to this issue, welcome.
Thank you, my name is Carol Lahas, and I live in Reiner. Over the years, I have repeatedly heard residents asking the Board of Supervisors for increased services, some of them urgently needed. The purpose of government is to provide services, to pay for those services, the community pays taxes. We've all seen that expecting rapid development to increase our tax base often backfires. Yes, it increases the tax base, but typically by less than the service burden created, dealing with stormwater issues, increased needs for fire, rescue, police, schools, water and sewer, et cetera. Sometimes when we think about taxes, we feel like our money is being taken away, rather than thinking of it as a contribution to the common good, or thinking about how much more we get in return than if we tried to buy those services individually. Those of us who haven't needed an ambulance or a fire response in the past few years still expect those services to be available when we need them, and as I hope we showed to our emergency responders today, that we all really appreciate that they are available for our community. Last year, when there was overwhelming support to increase property taxes by three cents to allow the schools to implement their proposed budget, the Board opted to increase taxes by only one cent. The main reasoning for holding taxes low, as a previous speaker said, was to avoid creating a financial hardship for low-income citizens. That is a legitimate concern. The county does offer property tax relief programs to low-income seniors and people with disabilities, and I understand that adjusting the rates is on your agenda tonight. As a reminder, the cost of a one-cent property tax increase to someone who owns a home assessed around the median value for the county of $300,000 would be $30 a year, and the cost of a three-cent increase would be $90 per year. Residents who do not own a home, or who own more modest homes, have a zero or very small dollar amount to pay when property taxes increase. For families with schoolchildren, paying an additional $90 a year in property taxes could have provided all schoolchildren with breakfast and lunch every day. could have provided all schoolchildren with breakfast and lunch every day, a benefit that would save many families that amount or more per month in food costs. That seems like a reasonable cost for all the services that could have been provided, ensuring all the students in our county could have breakfast and lunch, safe and fully-staffed schools, and excellent educational programs. It is the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors and county staff to provide the services that the citizens require and to set tax rates accordingly. If there is a population for whom the current tax relief programs, programs are insufficient, now is the time to try and address these needs, not realize in a few months that you can't raise taxes because you didn't properly address the issue now. If legislative restrictions prohibit you from making the changes that you feel are needed, this should go on the county's legislative agenda. Can you inform the public whether or not these programs are sufficient to meet the needs of low-income county residents? And one last item, if certain property is being assessed at an unreasonable value because of inexperienced outside appraisers hired to do the assessments, that's an entirely separate issue that really does result in extreme tax burdens on residents and also needs to be addressed by the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this topic? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I am going to close this public hearing and move to our next public hearing. The next public hearing is, uh, for Agape Center Corporation, requests for a continuation of tax exemption and new requests for personal property exemption. Do we have any staff presentation on that before we open the public hearing?
Um, one comment, the, um, the, the Board had three, um, separate ordinances on this. The one, like you said, is the renewal of the Agape property, uh, tax map 497-895. That one's moving forward. The, um, also the ordinance on the, um, personal property, uh, seeking for exemption on that, which is based on a vehicle. But the one, uh, for tax parcel 467-835A, they've asked for withdrawal, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification. On this, um, public hearing, I did not have anybody sign up in advance to speak. But if anybody in the audience would like to speak on the, uh, tax exemption requests from the Agape Center, please come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close that public hearing and move to our next public hearing, which is a ordinance for tax exemption, uh, requested from DePaul Community Resources. And I'm not seeing any staff information forthcoming on that. I also did not have anybody sign up to speak for this public hearing on DePaul Community Resources. If anybody would like to come forward and address this matter, please do so. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close that public hearing and move to our next public hearing, which is, uh, from Haxburg. This is a tax exemption request for them as well. Again, I did not have anybody sign up for this public hearing. Would anybody in the audience like to come forward and speak to this request? Seeing no one, I am going to close that public hearing and move to our final public hearing. And this is also a tax exemption request, and this is from Valley Classical School. Again, I did not have anybody sign up for this public hearing. If anybody in the audience would like to come forward, please do so. Seeing no one, I'm going to close this public hearing, and that will move us to public address. We do have, the guidelines are the same for public hearings and public address, so those are on the screens around the room. And I did have some people sign up in advance to speak to public address. When I reach the end of this list, anybody remaining who wishes to speak will be able to come forward at that time. I'm going to, um, call out the first two names, just so the next person on the list knows that they're on the bubble for the next public comment. Our first speaker this evening is Travis Lester, and Travis Lester will be followed by Molly Prillemann. Welcome.
So, to my understanding, I think you guys all have a copy of the letter and the petition. So, I don't know if I need to read that publicly or not.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lester. Um, can you start with your name and where in the county you reside?
Travis Lester, Montgomery County, District D.
Sorry to interrupt you. Please start.
No problem. Um, so I know my neighbor dropped this off last week. And like I said, I'm more than glad to read it again, or if you don't want me to, I won't. On my understanding, you all have a copy of it. Okay, well anyways, I'm here to represent myself and about forty other residents of Poff School Road. I know Mr. David Clark has already spoke about Poff School Road. Everybody that I've talked to, and I got over forty-some petition signatures on this, is supposedly Poff School Road has been on the improvement list for the last six years. Well, according to every resident that signed this, that's the same story that they've been told since 1988, that we've been on the six-year plan since 1988. Well, it's 2025, and the six years still hasn't came. Not sure, you know, what the deal with that is. But anyways, we put in a request over a year and a half ago to have slow-moving tractor signs put on our road. I had, uh, Representative V-Dot call me and said that they wanted to come out and put in watch-for-children signs. Was that correct? I said, "No, sir." I said, "That's another road. We're looking for slow-moving tractor signs." Year and a half later, that still hasn't been done. And so, like I said, once again, I'm more than glad to read this if you would like me to. We have multiple complaints about the speed limit on the road, trying to get the speed limit reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five. This is a very dangerous road. You spoke about a low-lined tree on 460. I know 460 is a much more populated road than Poff School Road. But I can go take pictures of fifteen or twenty low-lined trees on Poff School Road. That beats the crap out of everyone's vehicles. The mirrors on my tractor cost about a hundred dollars a piece. I gotta drive on the wrong side of the road to keep from the branches in the road tearing the mirrors off of my tractor every time I drive down the road. But every time, I gotta take a piece of equipment one mile down the road. I'm supposed to buy a hundred dollars' worth of mirrors? Just because all the tree limbs beat, beat the mirrors off of our tractors? I mean, I just, I don't understand what's gotta be done before we can get the speed limit lowered and to get V-Dot to do something on Poff School Road. So, the, the next thing is the school bus, which I don't know if any of you guys have read the comments on the school bus. But if you count every petition on this petition that I have signed, it's forty-some people. Every single person that I spoke to, the very first words that come out of their mouth was, "What do we have to do about the school bus driver before he kills somebody?" They nicknamed the school bus "The Death Bus." They nicknamed it "The Murder Bus." I got parents calling their kids and telling them to pull off on the side of the road and wait until the school bus goes by because they're afraid their child or their loved one will not make it home safely a meeting this school bus driver. And like I said, I can get into everything that I have wrote here about all the complaints that's been made to the school bus transportation supervisor. It's been multiple and multiple and multiple complaints made to him. Nothing has been done. The last time we made a complaint to him, he told us if we were not happy to contact the Virginia State Police Department. That was his response to over forty-some residents that live on this road that is in fear of their loved ones and their children making it home safe. That was his response to us. Contact the Virginia State Police Department if you're not happy with what I'm doing. I've had neighbors tell me that they've been in their yards, and they've heard the kids screaming on the school bus, "Please slow down, please slow down." I've had residents tell me that their kids have watched the speedometer on the school bus be well over fifty-five mile an hour on a single-lane dirt road that two vehicles cannot pass. But anyways, I'm not trying to run down a rabbit trail. Like I said, I think you all have copies of this. I think you've all read it. I'm not just speaking for myself. I'm speaking for myself and forty other people who are asking for help before somebody gets seriously hurt or killed on this road.
Thank you.
To slow people down and to do what we gotta do to make this road safer for our loved ones that we all live on.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
And it's not people that just travel this road.
Your time is up. I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
This is people that live on this road permanently that's asking for help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you. Next on our list is Molly Prillemann, and do we have a slide? I believe there's a slide to load before you begin speaking. If you'll just give Jen just a moment to get that on the screens. Okay. Thank you, Jen. Okay.
Hi, I'm Molly Prillemann. I'm at 975 Forest Street, Christiansburg. I'm reading the first part of a letter written by Elizabeth Struthers-Malbon sent electronically to each member of the Board of Supervisors and the county attorney on October 8th, 2025. Dear Supervisors, I'm writing to bring your attention to the posting of a new sign by the authority of V-Dot at the foot of the pedestrian and bicycle bridge over 460 near the Montgomery County Mid-County Park and the Frog Pond Pool. The new sign appeared at the end of August this year with these words, quote, "Bridges for travel purpose only, 24 VAC 30-21-30. Use or occupancy of this right-of-way for any non-travel purpose is prohibited and is considered trespassing. No stopping, standing, loitering, or assembly," end quote. The timing of the sign's appearance raised questions for the group of citizens who have been advocating for social justice by holding up messages such as "Workers Build the USA" on the bridge weekly since July. These questions were answered by David Clark, V-Dot Salem residency administrator in Christiansburg, who said the sign's placement was directed by the state VDOT due to, quote, "recent activity," end quote, at several highway overpasses, adding that there had been no complaints about such activity to his local office. Dan Casey's Rona Times column on 9725 confirmed that the sign was placed by the authority of the Commissioner of Transportation, Stephen Bridge. The time of the posting gives a hint of what a careful reading of the sign makes clear. V-Dot at state level is discouraging citizens from using this public space for expressing their First Amendment rights of speech and assembly. This is the implication of the differences between the Virginia Administrative Code, VAC Regulation, the sign sites, and the language of the sign itself. The VAC Regulation states, quote, "No person, firm, or corporation shall use or occupy the right-of-way of any highway for any purpose except travel," end quote. And lists prohibited activities, standing or parking a vehicle, fishing, tying a boat to the bridge. Of course, this is a pedestrian bridge over a highway. It is not a highway. But other bridges where an identical sign was posted in the state do carry both vehicles and pedestrians. The sign adds to this list prohibitive activities, stopping, loitering, and assembly. In addition, the sign claims that these newly prohibited activities are considered trespassing. And here also, the sign's wording goes beyond the regulation cited as the sign's authority, which makes no mention of trespassing. Lording is an interesting addition because in Little versus Doyle, 2003, the Virginia Fourth Circuit Appeals Court found in relation to VAC 46-2-930 that protesting cannot be charged as loitering because, quote, "Lording is aimless. Social protest is by definition purposeful," end quote. But the addition of assembly is even more troublesome because of its place in the First Amendment. Quote, "Congress shall make no law abridging the right of the people to peacefully assemble," end quote. It appears that by posting this sign, V-Dot is trying to stretch the existing regulation to stretch the law by simply asserting these additions on a sign. A lawyer has advised me that the additions are likely not enforceable because they are not part of 24 VAC 30-21-30. Although it might be impossible to determine the intent of those who caused the sign to be posted, the effect of the sign on the public has been clear and powerful, frightening citizens into limiting their own freedom of speech and assembly out of fear. This is what Timothy Snyder warns about in the first chapter of his On Tyranny, quote, "Do not obey in advance," end quote. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Elizabeth Struthers-Malbon, and then after that is Laura Brown. And it's my understanding, um, that this, um, picture is to stay up for this second public comment as well.
Yes, and thanks to Molly for reading the first half of my long letter. I'm Elizabeth Struthers-Malbon. I live in Montgomery County, District A. I'm reading the conclusion of the letter. Molly began for me. Interestingly enough, this bridge was built by V-Dot in 2001 for pedestrians and bicyclists as an accommodating response to public complaints that the new 460 bypass would cut off a residential neighborhood on the other side of the highway from easy access to the county pool. But now, in 2025, it appears that V-Dot is trying not to recognize the rights of the public to use what is, in effect, and according to David Clark, a sidewalk in expressing their First Amendment freedoms of speech and assembly. And a sidewalk is a highly protected space for peaceful protest. How does all of this affect the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors? The sign, of course, was posted by the authority of V-Dot, and I have written to Stephen Bridge, Commissioner of Transportation, to express our concerns about the language of the sign that goes beyond the Virginia regulation it cites as its authority and even challenges the First Amendment right of assembly. However, as is the case with other V-Dot regulations such as speed limits, V-Dot generally depends on local law enforcement, local sheriff's offices, and police departments to enforce its regulations and signs. Because this pedestrian bridge is outside the boundaries of both the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg, it falls to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office to enforce the new sign's asserted prohibitions. And you, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, are the authority that stands behind the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. What we are asking you to consider is whether you want to direct the sheriff's office to refrain from enforcing this sign prior to its legal basis being investigated. A number of groups and attorneys have argued that similar signs in other states are unconstitutional because they attempt to rob citizens of their First Amendment rights of freedom of speech and assembly. For example, Daniel Horowitz, an attorney in Lafayette, California, in a letter to each member of the Lafayette City Council in June 2024, first establishes by citing numerous court cases that sidewalks are public forums and thus protected spaces for peaceful protests, and that, quoting one such case, a, quote, "Public sidewalk does not lose its status as a traditional public forum when it crosses over a highway overpass," end quote. Second, Horowitz reminds the city council that in any abridgement of these rights of protest by law enforcement officials within the city, the city itself, quote, "violates the First Amendment, leaving the city liable for millions of dollars in damages and attorney's fees in a lawsuit under 42 USC 1983 and other statutes," end quote. Third, Horowitz backs up this liability of indirect involvement, such as the city enforcing a restriction of the State Department of Transportation by citing additional court cases concluding, quote, "It does not matter that Caltrans, California Department of Transportation, is the ultimate violator of the First Amendment. The city of Lafayette is liable. A city policy causes injury when it is the moving force behind a constitutional violation." As a concerned citizen of Montgomery County, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors, in consultation with the Montgomery County Attorney, to look carefully into the genuine risk itself of having the sheriff's office enforce the newly posted sign placed by V-Dot on Montgomery County property that seeks to prohibit the very assembly and free speech of expression that is guaranteed in the United States Constitution to citizens, including on public sidewalks. Caution, further research, and advice from the Board of Supervisors to the sheriff's office would seem to be in order here. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, we have Laura Brown signed up to speak, and I think we're gonna put the public address, uh, guidelines back on the screen before you speak. And then after Laura Brown, we have Patricia. I'm not gonna try it. Patricia C., you're laughing, so you know what I'm, I don't wanna mess it up. Welcome. Thank you.
Hello, I am Laura Brown. I live in District A, Montgomery County. Is that too close? Okay. After twenty-five weeks in a row of peacefully protesting on a bridge, a questionable sign went up in Shenandoah County late August. Approximately one week later, a few folks, all retired and over the age of seventy, with the Shenandoah Visibility Brigade, were arrested. Since then, countless articles, calls for a law enforcement investigation, letters to V-Dot Office in Stanton and Virginia State Police Office in Edberg have been delivered. Letters to Attorney General, V-Dot Superintendent, V-Dot Commissioner have also been delivered. Shenandoah County protesters have not been deterred. They continue their weekly protests on the other side of the signs. Here in Montgomery County, we have also been raising awareness to the sign on the pedestrian bridge over 460 bypass. Some of us with the NRV Visibility Brigade drove up to Woodstock earlier this morning to offer support and solidarity. We joined approximately fifty protesters outside the Shenandoah County Courthouse with signs and banners to show support for defendants and bring attention to the same questionable sign. The press and media coverage on site were interested to hear about another bridge with the same sign. We collaborated on information and questions. Why are our bridges being targeted? Why are our bridges being targeted by these VDOT signs? These two bridges are the only ones with the sign that we know of. Why are other Virginians able to practice their First Amendment rights without threat? There are multiple ongoing protests on bridges happening all over Virginia. Members of COVA, Coastal Virginia Visibility Brigade, were on the Northview Avenue sixty-four overpass in Norfolk protesting President Donald Trump's visit to the Naval Station Norfolk just last week. The Shenandoah Visibility Brigade, NRV Visibility Brigade, and COVA Visibility Brigade are part of a larger Virginia visibility network, which is then part of a national visibility network. We all share a collective agreement of standing up for the First Amendment rights and our freedoms, among others, of speech and assembly. The history of peacefully protesting on bridges runs deep. Bridges unite communities and symbolize the connection between people. This makes them a powerful and symbolic location for protesting, addressing issues that affect our society as a whole. And right now, our First Amendment rights are being threatened on a bridge. The First Amendment right serves as a cornerstone of U.S. democracy, but its protections are not absolute. And if we don't continue to stand firm, we'll lose them.
Thank you. Next, we have Patricia C., and then following Patricia is Anna Vijayan. Welcome.
My name is Patricia Colatosty. I live on Taylor Hollow Road in District A. I'm here tonight at a constitutionally protected peaceable assembly, using my right to petition the government for a redress of grievances concerning a new sign that appears to limit our freedom of speech. Every person who stands on U.S. soil has the right to assemble and the right to speak their mind without fear of repercussion from any level of government within the United States. This sign on the pedestrian bridge over Route four sixty tries to restrict assembly on a sidewalk, and it's an abrogation of the rights granted to everyone in the United States by the First Amendment to the Constitution. A few people holding signs is no more a danger to traffic than VDOT's ever-changing electronic signs, billboards, or even a traffic jam and fire trucks on an overpass. I am asking that this sign's purported authority not be locally enforced, and hopefully that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, after some more research, can help endorse the sign being removed. The rights of the people must prevail.
Thank you. Next, we have Anna Vijayan, and that is the last person that has signed up to speak this evening in public comment, but there is time after this speaker for anybody else to come forward. Welcome again.
Thank you. My name is Anna Vijayan, and I live in District A, and I will make this one short. While I am not a part of the group who has been holding signs on the bridge over the highway, I fully support their right to do so. Despite the claim and the sign VDOT recently installed at the bridge, nothing in Virginia code prohibits them from using that pedestrian bridge to hold a sign in peaceful protest. This is about protecting free speech right here in Montgomery County. If the situation with VDOT's sign is not remedied by your next meeting, I'm asking you to please continue to bring up this concern to your VDOT representative and direct law enforcement not to enforce the prohibition contained in the new VDOT sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to address the board? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Stephen Eubank. I live in Blacksburg. I'm also not one of the people who's been holding a sign up on this bridge, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to tell you what to do. I think you're opening yourselves up to big liability problems if you try to enforce this sign. But I did want to just read something. It's my favorite quote from The Man for All Seasons, in which somebody suggests cutting down the law to get to the devil. And Sir Thomas More responds, "Oh, and when the last law was down and the devil turned round on you, where would you hide, Roper, the law's all being flat? This country is planted thick with laws from coast to coast, man's laws, not God's. And if you cut them down, and you're just the man to do it, do you really think you could stand upright in the winds that would blow then? Yes, I give the devil the benefit of the law for my own safety's sake. And I'd also say, I've been staring at that motto all night, six imper tyrannus, and the very first thing a tyrant wants to do is shut down the freedom of expression for the people. And somebody has to stand up for it. Thank you."
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward during public comment to address the board on this or any topic? Okay, seeing nobody else come forward for public comment, we're going to close that section of the agenda and move to addendum. Is there an addendum this evening?
Yes, I would like to add an addendum to appoint Lisa Bales Assad to the New River Valley Community Services Board, and also to appoint Shannon Hillard to the Social Services Board. So is that, like, considered two items?
Well, we can handle the motion to add those two items to New Business as one motion, and then, so we will vote on the motion to add those under New Business, and then we will consider them during the New Business section of our meeting. So is that your motion to add those? Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion about adding these two items to New Business? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And I'm looking to our county attorney now. Would those be added as items A and B, or would they be added to the end of the New Business?
Let's go ahead and put them at the end.
Okay. All right, so we will take those up in New Business. Next, we'll move into Work Session. Is there a motion to go into Work Session?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, tonight in Work Session, we have an update on our county's financial report. Angie, did you want to introduce that, or are we just?
Mark is going to have that presentation for you this evening. He's going to hand out a hard copy in case people want to make notes on that, and then he will go through our year-end financial presentation.
Welcome, Mark. Glad you're here.
Let me give you a little financial update on our year-end two thousand and twenty-five. I'm going to give a little background on our revenue categories. As we've talked about in the past, county revenue falls into two categories, undesignated revenues and designated revenues. Undesignated revenues are unrestricted revenues, meaning that they can be used for just about any purpose. On the other hand, designated revenues are restricted revenues, meaning that they are earmarked for a specific purpose and can only be used for that purpose. And if you look at the graph that we have on the, or the pie chart here, you'll see that the lion's share of the county's revenue is undesignated revenue, and it makes up about eighty-eight percent of our total revenue picture. So in January of last year, during the development of the fiscal year twenty-six budget, staff told the board that the county would likely exceed our fiscal year twenty-five revenue estimates, and we did in fact exceed those revenue estimates. So undesignated general revenue collections exceeded the estimates by five point nine million or four point oh one percent. Those collections included about a million dollars in prepaid tax revenues that are due to, that are due in fiscal year twenty-six and budgeted in twenty-six, and then point six million in added revenue collected from the second payment of the real estate due to a one-cent tax rate increase that was not budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five. So actual year-end revenue collections of undesignated revenue, after accounting for those adjustments, was four point three million and was within two point nine seven percent of the estimate. In April, the county projected a surplus of four point one million. Designated general fund revenues, after we adjust for the CSA allocation, exceeded the estimates by five hundred and three thousand dollars and were within two point seven eight percent of the estimate. Go into a little more detail on the year-end results. So we had an extra four point three million in revenues. Those are not all ongoing revenues, as two point six million was added to the fiscal year twenty-six budget. So I'll kind of go over where these numbers came from. So we talked about this a little bit in the spring. We had two point two million in personal property, and of that two point two million, that was based on several business expansions. Just to give you an idea, that two point two is roughly seven years' worth of growth that we received in one year. Walmart and Target both remodeled their stores. FedEx and United Therapeutics Medical Lab added more value than we anticipated. And then there was additional value that was added from the commissioner of the revenues changed to rates at which property depreciates for tax purposes, and we talked about that a little bit this past spring. Then we had point nine million in interest earnings. That point nine in interest earnings was due to rates being elevated longer than we had originally anticipated. We had a rate budgeted around three point eight percent. The Fed's funds rate has been significantly above that for the year. It was predicted that the Fed would reduce rates more aggressively than they did, but that did not happen during the course of the year, and that's why we had that extra zero point nine million. Then we had zero point four million in real estate and public service corporation taxes, zero point three million in delinquent taxes. We actually fell short of our sales tax estimate by zero point one million, and then all other categories were zero point six million above the estimate. So all in all, that totaled four point three million dollars. If you just look at those first two categories that I just discussed in detail, they make up three point one million of that four point three million in additional revenue. And then again, as we discussed during the budget, not all those revenues were going to be ongoing revenues, as some of those we felt were going to be one-time in nature. Interest earnings, that zero point nine, the Fed had planned and is continuing to look at reducing rates, so we had reduced that additional amount coming in. Delinquencies, again, we didn't think that the zero point three in extra delinquent revenue would continue on, and then we had zero point five in other categories. Most of that was recovered cost revenue and a few other areas that were non-recurring. So there was one point seven that we pulled out that was one-time revenue, and then again, we added two point six in the ongoing budget for fiscal year twenty-six. This next slide shows the detail of the revenue categories. Again, you can see our total undesignated revenue at one point one hundred and four percent, or roughly four point oh one percent above the estimate. After we make adjustments for prepaid taxes and the one-cent tax rate increase, you see the four point three million dollars that we exceeded estimates and that two point nine seven percent over the total amount. Again, there's a designated revenue at two point seven eight percent over the estimate. After all revenues are considered and we make the adjustments, we were two point nine five percent over the total estimate. This next chart is something we put together for you guys a couple of years ago. It's kind of the county's house, and this chart really shows how the county's cash is distributed, and so it's four pillars that kind of hold up the house. So I'll kind of go through each one of these. So the first pillar is the cash flow reserve. It's based on twenty-four months of cash needs throughout the year that the county needs to pay bills, and historically reflects the cash low point during that period. The next column is the appropriations of cash to date. That's everything that the board has appropriated out of fund balance up to this meeting. The next pillar is other reserves, and those are specifically set aside reserves for unforeseen circumstances. And then the final pillar is the undesignated cash balance, and this is the amount of money that the board can spend without damaging the house. Total cash was sixty-seven point eight million dollars. Okay, this next slide, we call this a long sheet, and you guys have seen this for years. And again, this is kind of reiterates what we had on the previous slide. It starts with the general fund cash balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which is unaudited. Again, that's sixty-seven point eight million. Cash flow reserve, that's the estimated amount of money needed for operational cash flow based on the last twenty-four months to pay bills, and really is our cash low point, that's thirty-three million. The next column is everything that's been appropriated to date, plus the county's restricted funds. It's twenty-one point nine million. Our designated reserves, our reserves set aside for unforeseen circumstances, it's right at seven point nine million. And then our undesignated cash balance, this is the amount of money that the board can spend without damaging the house, so to speak, and that's right at four point nine million. You will see underneath of that, that number, there are a few items that the board can consider, two of which are on the agenda tonight, which is the fire and rescue study at eighty thousand and the county carryover, which is right at just under two point four This next chart shows the county's cash low points over the past twenty-four months. You'll see the county had a cash flow point in April of two thousand and twenty-three of thirty-three million. This helps us establish the amount we need to set aside for the county's cash flow reserve. Talk a little bit about fiscal year twenty-six and the current state of the economy. The county is currently tracking very closely to the fiscal year twenty-five estimates. I think when we get to this point next year, you'll see that the numbers will be significantly tighter. Updated estimates we provided in January and February of twenty-six. Talk about what's kind of going on in the U.S. economy. There's currently more uncertainty with the U.S. economy. Growth is slowing, and the labor market is weakening. The U.S. economy is slowing down. Citizens and businesses have been spending and investing over the past five years since the pandemic. This is starting to change. The county is seeing less value on the personal property book in previous years as citizens and businesses are spending and investing less. GDP is estimated at one point four percent by year-end. GDP showed growth of three point eight percent in the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-five as consumers continue to spend. This growth is expected to slow by year-end to a yield of an annualized rate of one point four percent. Just to kind of put that into perspective, the manageable amount of growth for GDP is in the two to three percent range, so that is, that is below what we would see as optimal. Unemployment is edging higher. It was four point three in August and is expected to hit four point five percent by year-end. The Fed has a target rate for inflation to be around two percent. Inflation is currently above that rate at, in August, it was at two point nine percent. The Fed reduced interest rates in September, and there's an expectation that there will be another rate reduction at the end of October at the Fed's meeting. So time will tell what impact that will have on the economy, and like I said, in the spring, January, I will provide you an update with where I think things are headed. That's all I have this evening, and I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mark, very much. This felt a little bleak there at the end. You started strong, but it felt a little bleak at the end. Let's see what kind of questions we have from everybody. We will start with Supervisor King. No questions. Supervisor Kits?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Supervisor Bone, do you have any questions?
No, just the comments, and this is the first time that I don't really have a question, but. And this is the first time that I don't really have a question, but I concur or I agree with all of that analysis, and I'm very grateful for the information. So thank you very much, Mark.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Biggs?
No questions, but thank you.
And then Supervisor Graski, any questions?
So I know here on the last one, on your last slide, you said we'll have an updated estimates and some, you know, we'll have some more data to look at as it relates to. But I mean, are there, are there any particular macro or micro trends that you're watching closer than others that could expose us, you know?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not concerned with the current year. I mean, I think that, I think we're going to be fine. The real question is going to be what happens over the next few months. It'll be interesting to see what the Fed does with interest rates and how that's going to impact the broader economy. I don't think we have anything to be concerned about initially. I think that we're seeing a slowdown, and I mean, that's going to happen. I mean, we've had a robust amount of growth.
I'd say we're just going to see a flat negative.
And so I just think that our expectation levels can't be as high as they have been, if that makes sense. So I think that, you know, I think growth is going to slow, but I don't see us being in a bad way in any way.
All right. Thank you.
Vice Chair Fitchikowski?
Yeah, I really don't have any questions, but just watching financial reports, it seems to agree with everything you just said. So I think it's going to be a wait and see.
And I have a question for information, not to make a point of any kind, and you'll understand why I say that. Does the Fed still meet if the government remains shut down? Does that, I don't, I don't know how it affects their calendar. Do you?
I'm not actually sure because we've been through these a few times, but generally the government shutdowns have been fairly short-lived. There's been several since I've been here that we've had and experienced. I'm not sure that the Fed is an independent agency. So, you know, I think that they will probably meet regardless of what's happening because, you know, but I could be wrong, you know? I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I just asked because I truly have no idea. Thank you very much for bringing all this information. Did that bring up any other questions for anybody? Okay. I'm not seeing any more questions for you. Thank you so much, Mark, for being here. And with that, we have no other items scheduled for our work session. So is there a motion to come out of work session?
Second.
Did you catch that, Madam Clerk? Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you will call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Graski?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchikowski?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. And we're going to take a short break before we move on to our consent agenda and new business. So the time now is 8:28 PM. We will take a 12-minute break and come back at 8:40 PM. I'm feeling generous tonight. So we will resume meeting at 8:40. Thank you.
Okay, let's resume, seeing everybody is back. And Supervisor Bone, are you still with us?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, let's move to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and moving into new business, the first item of new business this evening is the ordinance amending Chapter Two, Division Five, Section Two dash one zero seven, Tax Relief for the Elderly and Disabled. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this update? I don't see any discussion. Supervisor Bone, did you have any discussion items related to this ordinance update?
No, but I'll speak up if I have any on any of the...
Oh, okay.
Points that we'll be voting on. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, next, we have the Agape Center Continuation Tax Exemption Request. Is there a motion on this? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll open it for discussion. And is there anybody from the Agape Center here in the audience? If you could just raise your hand if you're with the Agape Center. Okay. All right, we don't have anybody here with the Agape Center. Is there any discussion on this? We have three votes for the Agape Center tonight, so is there any discuss... Excuse me, I'm sorry, two votes because Item D has been removed from the agenda. So, we have, this is a continuation of their tax exemption request, exemption request on Cambria Street. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'd like to see, since nobody's here asking taxpayers to give them a break, I'd like to put this off till the next meeting. I think if you're gonna ask taxpayers to give you a tax break, you ought at least be here. That's just my opinion.
I spoke with the representative of the Agape Center earlier today, and I thought that they were gonna attend the meeting. I don't know if they were here during the public address and then left. I'm not certain of that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion related to this item? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
For the reason I'm gonna vote this way is because nobody showed up. No.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Okay, and the next item is also the Agape Center Corporation Tax Exemption Request for Depot Street.
That's, Madam Chair, that's the one that's been withdrawn.
Excuse me? I'm sorry, I'm not following this very well. Okay, that one has been withdrawn, so we'll move to the next one, which is the Agape Center Corporation Tax Exemption Personal Property Request. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the personal property request? Thank you for keeping me in line, Marty. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Again, for the reason nobody showed up. No.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is DePaul Community Resources Tax Exemption Request. Is there a motion?
Till move.
Second.
And I'll open the discussion by asking the same thing. Is anybody with DePaul Community Resources? Great, thank you very much for being here. We'll have you come up if the board has any questions specific to you, but thank you for, for being here this evening. Is there any discussion or questions for the representative from DePaul? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Haxburg Tax Exemption Request for Leased Real Estate. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, and then I will start the discussion by asking the same question. Is there anybody? Great, thank you very much for being here this evening. We'll see if anybody has any questions for you. Is there any discussion amongst the board on this tax exemption request? Supervisor King?
They're asking for a tax break. Do they own this property?
My understanding is that it's a lease, but please... Welcome. If you could just introduce yourself before answering the question.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Joshua Eccleston. I am the treasurer on the Board of Directors for Haxburg. The property we're requesting tax exemption is leased from the Virginia Tech Corporate Research Center.
So, you actually don't own it?
We don't own it. I believe historically, there was an agreement, since the Corporate Research Center is a nonprofit entity in itself, and was leasing to for-profit entities as well as nonprofits, that the, the suites that we occupy, they would pay real estate tax on. And as a nonprofit, we're just requesting to be exempt from this leased space.
Aye, thank you.
And then, just to clarify while we've still got you, don't, don't...
I won't go away.
Run away. It's my understanding that this request is for a tax liability of $247.76 annually. Correct?
That sounds about correct.
Okay, stay with us. Does anybody else have any more questions?
So, if we were to grant the exemption, and should Haxburg vacate the space, what, what would happen in that instance?
That's a good question. I think the, the exemption would then go away. It, it's just for that space...
For the specific tenant.
Right. And, and it's not a tradition or anything, it's a statute. It allows the taxation of leased interests by owners who are otherwise tax exempt. The Virginia Tech Foundation's obviously is tax exempt.
Right.
They, they own the property. However, if the property is leased to a non-tax exempt entity like Haxburg, then a percentage of that lease interest is then taxed. It's nowhere near 100.
Okay.
Like, it's very low. And it depends on how many years the lease is.
Okay, that answers my next question of, I thought CRC properties were tax exempt.
Yeah, they, they are, but the lease interests aren't. And so, if Haxburg is leasing it, that, that, they would, according to their lease, probably be liable for the tax.
Yes, sir. And if it helps, we just renewed the lease, so...
Okay.
Okay, do we have any other? Vice Chair Fitchakowski?
Yeah, what do you all do there?
So, Haxburg...
Great question.
Yeah, I, I, you have much time that got. So, Haxburg, of course, for nonprofit, makerspace. Our slogan is the New River Valleys Community Workshop. So, we kind of did two things. The first thing is we, the, the space that we occupy is our makerspace. It gives space for our members to come and use our equipment and tools and resources to learn how to do different things and make different things. We have a full wood shop, metal shop, 3D printers, laser cutter, and we just expanded into a new suite, which I'll be back here next year on, to expand our fiber art program for embroidery and T-shirt design work. And so, our members can come and use the space 24/7. And then, the other part we do is, we hold classes and community events to help share the, the knowledge that our members contain to help educate others who are, who are wanting to learn. Anything from starting, seed starting, to canning, to, to laser cutting. And then, our community events, we have one coming up this Sunday. If you want to learn how to make apple cider, you bring your own apples and a jug, and we'll help you turn it into apple cider.
Do you have a lot of members?
We're currently sitting at, I believe, 35. And then, our annual reach is about 200 attendees to our classes. That does include some members. Benefit of membership is you get to attend the classes for free. For non-members, we just charge a nominal $5 cost.
Are most of your members students at tech?
Actually, most of them are not. They're community members. We do have a few, a few students who come and use our facilities for just hobby projects to get away from the stress of school sometimes.
Thank you.
And I'll point out for you, not only do you offer the space, but you also have the equipment and tools in those facilities. So, for example, in your woodworking space, there are pieces of equipment that your normal person is not gonna have in their home, belt sanders and machinery and stuff like that.
Giant CNC machine.
Yes.
Yeah, so, it's tools that people normally wouldn't have access to, and that also extends to some businesses that, in the CRC as well. We do have some members who are businesses that, before they make that capital investment, they'll use our machines to prototype. But, we kind of have a unwritten policy that, once you get to the manufacturing stage, you can't really use our facilities for that, because it would take away from the other members.
Okay, do we have any other questions about this request? Okay, you're next on the list too, so maybe just have a seat in the front.
Okay.
See if we have any questions on the next one. But, seeing no additional discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Great. Okay, so, the next is Haxburg Tax Exemption for Personal Property. On this, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion on the personal property tax exemption request? Okay?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, excuse me.
What, what is the personal property? Is it a vehicle?
No, sir. It's just the equipment that is in the space, so the belt sanders, table saw, those kind of items.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
I think he was wonderful to work with through the whole process.
Great. Thank you for complimenting Vicky. She is fantastic, and we are very blessed to have her. The next item on our agenda is Valley Classical School Tax Exemption Request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and we'll start the same way. Do we have anybody? Thank you very much. We do have two people in the audience this evening to answer any questions about Valley Classical School. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Great, thank you for being here this evening. Okay, moving on, the next item on our agenda is Montgomery County Public Schools Supplemental Appropriation and Staff. Do we have, Angie, do you have anything about this?
It's fairly self-explanatory that there are two resolutions. The first one is for $790,000 to appropriate a government Virginia grant, and I know that Ms. Fland is here if we have more specific questions about that.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, next is MCPS Capital Funds Transfer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about this item?
This is just to transfer funds from the future school capital projects allocation to a specific project of Margaret Biggs Playground Equipment.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. Excuse me. Next item is Fiscal Year Twenty-Five County Carry Forward, and I'm gonna toss it to Angie before we get a motion on this.
Thank you. This is our annual carry forward request. Departments are, bring these requests before Mark and his budget staff. They, the staff works with the departments to determine whether or not the funds that they're requesting can be covered in their existing budget, and that they meet the criteria of one-time items and so forth. If you have any specific questions, we can address those, but they are fairly standard.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions related to this item?
Yes, is the public safety money, that 549, 232, is that for the armored car?
No, that's for the one-time money for the SRO positions. The armored car vehicle, that already got appropriated.
Okay, thank you.
It did come out of their carryover, and this was the remaining funds.
Gotcha.
Okay, is there, are there any other questions?
Just, just one, on the... I can't remember what they call, but it's Employee Engagement Committee. There you go. Is that gonna be enough? Because they do a lot, they do a lot.
They do a lot. They already have funds in their budget, and they just asked for a little bit extra this year because it's their fifth anniversary, and they wanted to do a little bit more this year, but they, they felt like that was sufficient.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was an awesome question. Okay, any other questions before we... Your, your question was also good, Steve. Okay, seeing no additional questions, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an appropriation for the fire and EMS study. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, next item is to schedule a public hearing for a boundary adjustment with the town of Blacksburg. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions about this?
Just quick summary, this, the town of Blacksburg is currently doing a comprehensive redoing of their boundary to make sure what they do have is, is what shows up in the, in the title and, and all the survey work. And so, there's a couple minor adjustments that they're asking that we make. There's three minor ones that really are very small. And then, the, really, the predominant part of the request is the property near the old, old high school. There's, there was a parcel that was in the county, part of the parcel that was in the county that wasn't in the town. It's there on Exhibit D, it's called the East Area, and you can see that little triangle. They're asking if that could be placed into the town. It's currently nothing that's developed, it's kind of a hill, and I'm not sure what they're gonna do with it, probably not much, but, but it only totals about 7.2 acres total, so it's, it's really a cleanup.
Is that owned by the town? That, so it's, they're asking for property that they own to be brought in?
Correct, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marty. Are there any other questions or discussions on this request? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits? Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
And the public hearing will be November 12th, and the GIS person from the town will be here, and she'll kind of go over it for you and give you a rundown.
Great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is to amend the Board of Supervisors' meeting dates.
Motion.
Okay, in November and December 2025.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this topic?
Will, will this give us enough time to do the business we need to do?
I'm not aware of any business that we will, that would be prohibited from being done because of adding or combining the December meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is National First Responders' Day, October 28th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and we have two additional items not in new business. These came from our addendum to the meeting earlier. The first item, and I'll read these, they're very quick, is an appointment to the Community Services Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby appoints Lisa Bales Assad to the Community Services Board effective October 15th, 2025, with a term expiring on June 30th, 2028. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Great, we really look forward to her participating with the meetings.
Will she be notified, like tomorrow? Can Vicky notify her? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair de Mots?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and our final new item, our new business item also is an appointment that we covered in addendum. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby appoints Shannon Hiller to the Social Services Board effective October 15th, 2025, and expiring June 30th, 2029. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Fitchikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Chair de Mots.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, moving into reports. County Attorney's Report.
No report, Madam Chair.
Shocking. County Administrator's Report.
I wanted to mention something that you brought up at the beginning of the meeting regarding the IT staff. They have really been working diligently, very diligently, and they've... I think they made progress a few minutes ago, because I got a few emails from some people that I hadn't received emails from for a few days. So, I know that they are working hard and that they're dedicated to getting this resolved. I wanted to thank the board for their participation this weekend at the extended work session. That really helps staff a lot. It helps us get some direction on bigger topics from you. I wanted to remind the community that reassessment is underway. So, if you see people in your neighborhood who are looking at your property and leaving notices on your door, that is... Those are folks from our contractors. They should have marked vehicles if they're doing that. And it's hard to believe, but since our last regular meeting, this seems like a long time ago, but Teal Park had the official opening, and Parks and Rec celebrated its 50th anniversary at the end of September. That was a great event. And there were some students from the Auburn Middle and High School choirs who sang the National Anthem. It was beautiful. So, that was a great event. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now, we'll move to Board Members' Reports, and we will start. Supervisor Bone, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I was wondering if staff could look into the legal issues that were brought up during public address about the pedestrian bridge. I believe, most people believe in freedom of speech, and... Anyway, I'd like to hear what at least the county attorney or others, other attorneys for counties in the state, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, and we'll move on with Board Reports. Supervisor King.
No report.
Supervisor Kits.
No report.
Supervisor Grafsky.
As Ms. Hill said, you know, while the staff may have appreciated what we did, I really appreciate all the work that goes into prepping those meetings. So, please pass along my thanks to the staff. And maybe, or maybe not, pass along to the assessors that there's a motion activated jumping spider on my front porch. 'Tis the season. That's all.
Supervisor Biggs.
Well, earlier today... Well, first, I want to thank staff too for the great work session we had Saturday. It was really, really good. But I wanted to bring to your attention that today, Steve and Angie and I attended another meeting concerning the Partnership for Progress. As you might recall, that's something that Virginia Tech and the two towns and the county are working on together. And so, we started this back in September 2024, and we've gone through the process of having community engagement and identifying some of the areas that need to be worked on, and trying to establish a framework of how we might be able to address concerns. And some of the concerns mentioned were housing, of course, transportation, education, early childhood education, childcare, tourism, workforce, you can just imagine, and healthcare, you know. So, we have a lot of issues, but one of the things, moving forward, the consultant is going to take all the information that they've gathered. They're going to send it out to the groups that have been working on it and sort of refine that. And they're hoping to have all of that information sort of gathered by October 27. And they're going to come out with a document. And then, from there, we're going to have to actually take over, and we're going to have to look at, okay, how do we want to go about addressing some of these problems and the framework that we might want to address them with, and outreach to other folks, and educate folks on exactly what we've been doing this whole time. So, Angie and Steve can chip in here. I think that what I got that was very positive today, that people really felt like progress had been made, and it was so important to have these groups together after all of this time and actually see some work and identify problems, and also to use the framework. If something were to happen, and we had a challenge, something would be set in place to deal with that challenge. So, we're sort of just in the, I guess, beginning stages of how we're going to use the information and how we can work on, you know, a challenge that we've identified. So, I don't know. Do you guys want to add to that?
Of course. Right now, it's not even my turn.
Well, but you were at the meeting.
I'll give you another turn.
Yeah, you were at the meeting.
Yeah, I'll just add on that a lot of the people involved in this aren't necessarily government. They are nonprofits, and a lot of other organizations were brought in so that we kind of get a much broader opinion on how to handle things. And it's not meant to be a miracle solving the housing problem. We talked about that. I thought we were 4,000 houses short in the county, but I was corrected. It's 9,000. So, if we work towards providing housing or initiating housing, it's not going to solve that problem overnight, or even probably in... Should I say 10 years? But I brought up the fact that the Valley-to-Valley Trail Project is still continuing forward. That was something that actually came up, I think, 20 years ago. And it died, because people stopped talking about it, and they stopped moving it forward. And I think this particular group is not going to let that happen on these issues. And there was a lot of issues, as Supervisor Biggs mentioned. So, I'm looking forward to it. I hope I'm around long enough to see some results. And I don't have any other report.
Angie, did you want to?
I just would add that Emily Gibson has done a great job heading that up and really spearheading that. And I think an analogy she used today was, we have a task force that we developed during COVID. We had to do it very quickly, and it was very strong, and we've used it during other emergency situations. Since then, we can lean on that, and that this was also creating a similar framework, as Mary spoke about, that if, by having a regular cadence of these groups of people meeting together, that framework would be in place to take care of those things.
And the only other thing I had is, on November 17, which is a Monday, from 6:00 to 8:00, there will be another community meeting at the Montgomery Executive Airport, Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport, on the strategic plan, if you want to stop by and see what that's all about.
Great. Great update. Vice Chair Fitchikowski, do you have any more to add? That was it. Okay. And I also have no report this evening. Just want to remind everybody, our next meeting is our legislative meeting. So, we have invited our delegates and state senators to break bread and review our legislative priorities with us. That is next Monday, October 20, at 6:30 p.m. in NP2, here in the County Government Center.[1780.83]